Next item?
Insurance 11A1.
11A1. Okay.
It's the, another EDF project.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead. Yes, sir. Commissioner Barreiro, this is your item.
My 11A1, well, let's start off with, it's $9 million, which represents 25% of the estimated $35 million in public infrastructure needed in the area for this project. That basically is 2% of the $430-plus million this project will, will cost. Funded privately, the $430 million. It is, well, I'd like to ask for the administration to put on record the issue of the jobs.
There are at least 571 jobs created. It's a $412-million project. It is not on county-owned land. It's on city-owned land, and the total, the grant would be $9 million for public infrastructure on the city-owned land to, to help the project. Again, to be given after the project is completed and after the verification of the 571 jobs. And the administration, the administration is recommending this project.
Okay, you're moving the item, Commissioner?
I'm moving the item.
It was seconded by Commissioner Jordan.
And I just want to put also that it has more than 5,000 direct jobs during construction, for the construction phase.
Those are direct and indirect.
Are you recognizing the person, Commissioner Barreiro?
Yes. Madam Chair, I'm going to recognize Mr. Jeff Berkowitz for the project.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeff Berkowitz with offices at 2665 South Bayside Drive. Skyrise Miami is a game changer by anybody's definition. Excuse me. Skyrise Miami is precisely the type of game-changing economic engine which the voters envisioned when they approved the 2004 bond issue. Your rules, your EDF rules, require that we provide in support of our application an economic study, impact study, demonstrating the long-term economic benefit over a 20-year time period of our project on Miami-Dade County. We hired the Washington Economic Group to perform that study. We shared that study with the Beacon Council, with your Economic Development Agency, and they, their economists approved that study. We then shared it with Dr. Cruz, the county's economist, who likewise approved our numbers. The study found that, quote, "Skyrise Miami's presence will enhance the state and Miami-Dade County's global brand as a top entertainment and leisure destination for both domestic and international visitors, creating thousands of jobs in a variety of industries." Skyrise Miami strengthens the economic development strategy of Miami-Dade and Florida in the targeted entertainment and visitor cluster of industries. This cluster of industries has been selected by your Beacon Council, One Community, One Goal Plan for additional expansion. We also meet the criteria in the EDF bond issue for international trade and global commerce. The study specifically found that Skyrise Miami will produce more than 6,700 indirect, direct, and induced jobs during its construction period, and more than 15,000 jobs annually during each year of operation. Yes?
If we could go to, straight to the...
Certainly.
To answer any question that any commissioner might have, because we didn't allow presentations on the other. So go ahead with your questions, Commissioner Barreiro.
How many indirect jobs?
Indirect jobs during operation, more than 15,000 annually. Indirect, direct, and induced. Direct jobs, somewhere between 500 and 900 jobs, direct jobs.
When will you start, when will you start the, the construction and how soon will we finish?
Construction started, I've spent $16 million out of my pocket to date.
And when will it finish?
2018, God willing.
That's it, Madam Chair? I'll ask where any questions.
Thank you. I believe I have some commissioners who pulled the item. Commissioner Hayman, Commissioner Zapata, Commissioner Sosa. Okay. Commissioner Diaz. Okay. And Commissioner Bell. Anyone else who wants to speak on this item? Okay. So Hayman is not here, she comes back. Oh, you already spoke. Okay. Zapata, you already spoke, the same apply. Okay, I have to say something that, you may sit down.
Sorry?
You may sit down, thank you. If I need you, I'll call you. This is a very sensitive one, because there's no question that if we have a process, this item should classify at some point as a game changer, because of the changes that are going to bring in infrastructure. I am concerned about direct jobs, because the gap between 500 and 900 is too big, so I'm not completely convinced on that. But my problem is bigger than that. My problem is a position of trust. Some commissioners doesn't represent the city of Miami, but we are some commissioners who, we do represent residents of the city of Miami. How can I tell the residents of my city, who have called me, and have told me, and have stopped me in supermarkets, to tell me, Commissioner, I don't want to pay one penny? It's, it's, I voted for this because I was told, and I am not going to enter into, you told me, he told me, I didn't say, he didn't say, but the county, the city, the residents, the voters were told, this is a game changer, this is a beautiful project, but not even one penny from your pocket will go to that. The public, the citizens of the city voted for. And now I, as a commissioner of the city, and we, as commissioners of the county, we come and we say, okay, they were told that not even one penny of their pocket was going to use for this, but I'm going to vote, and you will have to pay for it as part of the bonding that was approved many, many years ago, when this project was not part of any idea. And the election on this project was the other day. So we can't even say that it was four years ago, five years ago. No. If they were in the process of soliciting funding, it should have been made public before the public voted for that. And I am not blaming anyone, I'm not asking who was supposed to do it, but as a conscious person, how can I sit here and vote if they go through a process, if the community, but what I have received on feedback is really, really negative? Because then I'm forcing the taxpayers of Miami to pay taxes, I am with my vote, for something that they approved with the condition that they were not going to pay taxes. I cannot take away the beauty of the project. I cannot take away the game changer the project could be. I cannot take away the number of jobs that this project can create. But how can I do that? How can I go against something that the public believed in and trusted? So I respect you tremendously, I think that the project, nothing against the project, nothing against the person, but I think that if this commission do that, we will be sending a very risky message. Because how are we going to respond to the taxpayers of Miami? Mr. Attorney, let me ask you a question. Can we tax the rest of the county and not the residents of the city of Miami on a bonding?
No. Commissioner, the general obligation bond issue was approved by all the voters.
By all the voters.
And all the, actually, I should say, all the property owners.
And the residents of the city of Miami voted at that time for this bonding.
Correct.
But then they voted the other day, and they said, I approve the project, but I don't want to pay one penny for it.
That's correct, too.
Okay. So I can support something like that, because I will have no explanation to give to the residents of the city, even when I cannot talk about the project itself, out of respect and, and out of reality. Anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? Commissioner Diaz. I'll go back to you, Mr. Mayor. I have Commissioner, let me see which one is this one, because 11A1, I have, Sosa already spoke, I have Diaz, and then, okay, Commissioner Diaz.
Mr. Mayor, you wanted to say something before I go forward and...
You want to recognize?
Yes, I understand. Because I want to hear what he's got to say.
Okay, if you want to do that, it's because you're referring an answer to him, or you're taking over the process?
Okay. I think it was my turn to recognize somebody if I wanted to.
No, that's why. Telling you, you want to ask the question, too?
Well, isn't that part of what we do up here?
Go ahead.
Wow.
Go ahead.
Yeah, man.
No, Commissioner, let me explain to you.
I'm going to get some bonbons in a little bit.
When you, when I had you in the list to...
I said to speak, but then he asked to speak, and I want to hear what he says.
Do you want to hear?
Okay.
When I had you in the list, I told the mayor, Mayor, let me get everybody who pulled the item, and then I will go back to you, so you can...
I'll then hear you.
Oh, that's why, I wanted to clarify, that's why I said, do you want to change?
Okay.
But, go ahead.
And I guess all I want to hear is what he's going to say, based on then what I'm going to, I say. So if you don't mind, Madam Chair, I would like to hear what the mayor was going to say. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, please.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. You know, there's been a lot of talk about who said what and all. This application has been in front of us for months. We've known about it for months, the city of Miami knew about it since April at least, because they made it known to the city of Miami that they were applying for this, and they were also applying for state funds. The issue of city of Miami taxpayers paying for this, actually, unless you put aside the $9 million and says, we're not going to spend the $9 million on anything, then maybe that's a valid argument. But if we're going to spend the, the entire $75 million, the city of Miami taxpayers are going to pay for this $9 million for something that may not even be in their city. Okay? And so, and so, I think that if you ask the people of the city of Miami, we have this $9 million that we're going to spend, do you want it in your city, or do you want it somewhere else? I think, because everybody's, you're going to pay, I mean, everybody's going to pay in the county, I think they'd vote that, yeah, I'd rather keep it in the city. All right? And so, that, I think that argument has been lost on everybody, because somehow, the argument is somehow we're not going to be using this $9 million for economic development somewhere in Miami-Dade County. That's not written, you know, where this whole thing started, but it's the absolute truth. And so, this project is a game changer. From Miami-Dade County's perspective, as the mayor of Miami-Dade County, this is a game changer. This is an iconic building that will probably end up being maybe a symbol of Miami, a Eiffel Tower of Miami. And by the way, the Eiffel Tower did not come to existence without its own controversy. There was a famous Parisian at the time who was either an artist or an architect, I think his, his name was Guy de Montpont, something like that, that he would eat every day at the Eiffel Tower. And the reason that he ate every day at the Eiffel Tower, because it was the only place in Paris that he didn't have to see the Eiffel Tower. Okay? And so, the Eiffel Tower, and he was a very, very prominent person, okay? And, and he hated the Eiffel Tower, and yet the Eiffel Tower is a symbol of Paris today. All right? So this is a game changer. These, these applications were before us for many months, and so, you know, the administration, I, I support this, this project. It's a, it's a 2% investment on a $400-million project, which will have between 500 to 900 direct jobs, all right? They are, they are guaranteed at least 571, according to, to what we have, and then you have already heard about the indirect benefits. And so, I think this, this project needs to move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And that's kind of what I wanted to hear from you before we continued on. Was the vote in the city of Miami based on the property being used for this, or for the, what was the vote actually for, for the city of Miami, if I could ask? Because I, I want to hear, I want to respect what the chair is saying, and, and I want to understand, because I have heard that this project was in Tallahassee before asking for money?
Yes, it was.
Okay? And then, I, I knew that this project would eventually end up on our doorsteps, and, and make logical sense, if you're asking Tallahassee, you're asking, you know, so on. I want to have the clarity, because there's a lot being said on all levels of this project. And we want to make sure that the public, like we've asked hard questions of everybody else, those are hard questions that are directed, this is not about a couple of cents, and this is a lot of money, of the taxpayers' money. So I need to know what the actual vote was for the city of Miami, and, and I don't want to say who said what, what was said, because I think that was clear, but I just want to know, was it because the property, they needed to have a vote to be able to use that property? Is that what?
Commissioner, Mr. Berkowitz could tell you exactly what happened with that part of the deal. The only part that we're, that we, we were involved with, the project itself, the economic development aspects of, of the project, and does it merit county funds for public infrastructure to help the project? That's what we were, that's what we were involved in. I also want to, want to, you know, we've already approved a certain number of mon, a certain number of projects today, all right? Well, city of Miami people, folks and property owners are going to be paying for some of those projects that are not in the city of Miami.
I understand that, Mr. Mayor. I just want to understand why did it go to vote? And if I can, Mr. Berkowitz?
Thank you for the opportunity. The matter was a lease extension. The opinion of the, excuse me, city attorney, this past spring, overruled her predecessor and said that a referendum was necessary in order to amend a lease. The, the tower will sit on a piece of property that was leased by Bayside for the next 46 years. We had a sublease with Bayside. City attorney opined that it was necessary for us to go to a referendum. I have been consistent from day one that 100% of the cost of the tower, that's over $400 million, will be privately funded. I have been upfront, transparent, and abundantly clear from day one that we were seeking these EDF funds. We filed the application as a matter of public record in December. I sent, I'm sorry, I personally delivered to the deputy city manager, the deputy city manager, a document, this is not he said, she said. I delivered the document that said we've made application for county funds and for state funds. There were no less than 18 articles in the Miami Herald and the, and Miami Today talking about our efforts to secure public infrastructure funding. Now, what is the public infrastructure funding? Is it on city land? Some of it, some of it's on state land. It's Biscayne Boulevard to facilitate the traffic flow on one of the worst intersections or areas in the entire city.
Mr. Berkowitz, I don't want, I don't want the chair and, and people to, to try to stop, because we didn't give a chance for other people to make presentations. I, and I, and I, I understand, and I, the questions are, questions, but I understand what the chair is going to tell me, it's not fair to other applicants that maybe didn't get, and, and no, 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 it's not for you to stop and walk away, it's simply that we want to have a process for everybody. The question was a simple question. The vote was for the use of an extension of the land, of the lease?
It was a lease extension for Bayside and of the sublease to Skyrise.
Okay.
And now, and now the lease term is 99 years.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, the, the monies that, again, will be, if this project gets to move forward, will be at the end of the project, when the project is completion, like every other project we talked about?
It's like every other project. He actually has to upfront all the infrastructure money, do it, build the project, be in operation, and we have to verify 571 permanent jobs, so he has to put his $412 million upfront, and then after that's verified, then he'll get the grant.
So all the monies that this county is putting forfeits for infrastructure to then create a game changer? Because even the chairwoman just was very clear, the chairwoman was very clear and said that this is about game changing, and, and all the things that were said, she was very clear in saying. The, the one issue is the part about the voters being told one thing, and then another thing happens. That is a valid point, that it gets put out there. But my, my issue is also that it wasn't us to put that out there, it wasn't our level of government, it wasn't, so that was why I was trying to understand what the reason was it took place for a vote. Because at the end of the day, we, the state has their way of doing things, we have ours, and the cities have theirs. And we, I, I think it's not in our duty to tell the cities what to do unless it's done through a mandate of this commission and, and the county, but that wasn't the case. So at this point, I, I feel that the project is, I think, an outstanding project moving forward, like the chair has said, too. I don't have a problem moving forward based in that I never promised anybody on this project anything, because we hadn't dealt with it. But I understand others' people's concerns, but that is not, at this level, what I'm looking at for, to vote on today, which is, it creates the jobs, it will create a game-changing project, it will do a, a service to this community, because let me, I heard these arguments when we approved the tunnel years ago, when we worked on the tunnel, there was people who said, no, no, that this is, no, it was never going to happen, that's, the tunnel is never going to take place, we had municipalities going against because it was too much money in the state. Today, our port now quadruple its production, not quadruple, triple its production, triple, that was a little bit, you know, triple its production and do a lot more because of that tunnel, and will take the trucks out of the area. So based on that, I, I see that sometimes we have to step forward in some of these projects that are different and better. I tell you, Toronto, when you go there and they have that tower, when you go to Empire State Building, which was standing there quite alone for a while, when you have all these other things, it's a monarch to an area. And anything that brings monies into these communities, to me, is a, is a game changer, especially when you add the jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have, let me acknowledge receiving a letter from the mayor of the city of Miami explaining the elections, the vote of the people. I acknowledge that, and I know that everybody got a copy of that. And Commissioner Diaz, we, we are like three or four commissioners, Commissioner Diaz, who represent the city of Hialeah, for example. When, when a question is raised to the residents of Hialeah, we always try to work, because it's something that we have to respect. It wasn't our question on the ballot, it wasn't our language on the ballot, but it was the city's question on the ballot. And government have to, we will place the elected officials of the city of Miami also in a very awkward position. I am very concerned, and, and I feel bad, because it's not against the project itself, it's against what was promised. And if a mayor in a city goes and promises something to the residents, it's very hard for me to override what that mayor does. It places us in a very awkward position, that's all I'm saying. There was a car that apparently was misplaced, someone who wanted to speak on this item in the morning. I never do that. If, if I open for you, Laura, I will have to open for anyone, but if I have anyone in this table who wants to ask any question, she represents the Audemars Society, who have been dealing with this, if anyone wants. Commissioner Suarez, you want to recognize her?
Yes.
Because I don't want to bend the rules that I have established, and I want to be fair to everybody, so...
Yes, absolutely.
Commissioner Suarez is recognizing you, Laura.
Thank you. This also relates to item 5H.
We are not there yet.
Okay, so 11A1 is where you're at.
At the proper public hearing, then you will have the opportunity.
Great, thank you. So I just wanted to bring up another issue related to the, the Skyrise. One is that if you look at the, if you look at the permit and the variance, you'll, you'll notice that this is an outstanding Florida water body, this is the Biscayne Bay Aquatic Preserve, and it's protected by state statute. And so even though you've got a, I think, a four-year, you're extending the code for allowing for the staging area in this particular location for four, four years, I believe, that is, you know, Johnson Seagrass has been shown to be there, even though it says there's, there's limited seagrass in the area, this particular site, if it's covered for four years, would have an impact on the aquatic preserve. So I just wanted to ask that as you take this item up, that you require, you know, regardless of the merits of this project, I'm not going to go into that, but you require that there's mitigation attached to the Skyrise project, and that you will come to that item later. And the second item I wanted to discuss is...
No, you were only recognized for this one.
Oh, okay.
By Commissioner Suarez.
The other one is 14A2.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else who wishes to speak? We don't have enough commissioners here in the table. We're missing a few?
What do we got?
Oh, they are here around. Okay, go ahead.
To close, Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barreiro, yes, I don't have anyone else? Oh, wait, Commissioner Suarez wants to speak.
All right, go ahead.
No, he's going to close, it's his item.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I love that historical reference to Guy de Montpisson, who apparently disliked it so much that the Eiffel Tower, that he had to eat there every day so he wouldn't have to look at it. No disrespect to Mr. Berkowitz, who was kind enough to show me this project a few months ago. I, I understood that it would not require any public funding, I maybe misheard.
Me, too.
But I, I did have lunch the other day with a direct line of sight to where this would be located. And we all have our notion of aesthetics, I, when I, when I first saw the, the rendering that, that you brought me, I, it just didn't strike me the way it strikes me now, which is that it's very much like an inverted toenail clipper. So if I, I would have to do like Guy de Montpisson, I would have to eat inside there all the time, so I wouldn't have to look at it. But the other day, I happened, Friday, I happened to have lunch at Bayside, and folks, Bayside was the classic game changer, if you want to look at game changers. I don't think all of Bayside cost 400 and some million dollars. It did have a, Commissioner Jordan, it did have a requirement that more than 50% of all the owners be minorities or women, 85% of all the initial employees were minorities or women. And we struggled to make it happen, as Commissioner Diaz said. A lot of things have changed in, in Miami since 19, I think we finished Bayside and inaugurated 1986 or '87. At this particular point, this kind of an attraction, assuming that one can reach the conclusion that it's an attraction, would not be beneficial to downtown. As I sat there on Friday with a direct line of sight where it would be, I also worried a lot about the transactional cost. In economics, there's something called a transactional cost, and Laura referred to some of the environmental consequences, but the four years of construction, what that could do to Bayside, with the hope that someday this thing will actually attract, I believe it's more than 3 million... I believe it's more than 3 million people, which would then create a major problem for all the residents of downtown. The area has changed. What we need to provide is public space, we need to provide pedestrian flow. And, and that's the effort towards many of which are working, including, I remember Commissioner Moss saying the other day how badly we need a major public space, a convening place, a commons. And I intend, by the way, to present an idea that I put forth on that, that has been worked up since then by the builders of, of the Miami Tunnel, Biscayne Bay Tunnel, the Bouygues, the French company. In any case, for every reason imaginable, including, and again, not to doubt Jeff Berkowitz, who's done so many wonderful projects in Miami and who himself is a fantastic person, but I, I just don't see this ever really happening. So what I see is just an eyesore and a major problem for downtown Miami. The neighbors are opposed to it, clearly, Downtown Neighborhood Alliance. I, I just, I cannot possibly support it for every reason imaginable.
Thank you. Anyone else before I go to Commissioner Barrero? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, on the issue of public funding, I sponsored an item here to put it into our legislative package to request public funding from the legislature.
And we supported it.
And it passed. And that was way before the election. Then in the legislature, they allocated. Now, this is on city property. Yes, through, leased through Bayside, but it's on city property. It's basically 25% of the public infrastructure investment. You know, I think the City of Miami deserves its fair share. I think, and on the issue of the city and the mayor, I respect highly our mayor of the City of Miami. I work very closely with him. I think what he said and when he went out and campaigned in reference to the construction of the facility, he was 100% right. Yeah, it wasn't not going to cost, it is not public money for the construction of the building. But just like I respect his side as a city mayor and within his jurisdiction, I think there's separation of governments at the city, county, and state. And we have a pot of funds available for game changing projects and a project within the City of Miami. If they're going to do substantial infrastructure improvements, has any project that's game changing within the City of Miami, has the right to apply. Does it, does it say contrary to what the mayor sold or told the people? No. He told them what was based on the building. He was not dealing with infrastructure. Actually, he can't because the state road in front of him is not a City of Miami road, it's a state road. So I highly, you know, we're talking about creating jobs, we're talking about creating impact. This is a, a major project in the heart of our region, not just City of Miami, not just county, of our region. And I ask you to support it. I ask you to give it the vote of confidence. This is, money's at the end of the project when it's completely built out. If it never gets built out, Commissioner Suarez, it'll never receive the funding. So I ask you for your support on this project.
Thank you, Commissioner. And it was properly moved and second. Mr. Clerk.
Commissioner Hayman? Mr. Jordan? Mr. Monistim? Mr. Moss? Mr. Soto? Mr. Suarez?
No.
Mr. Zapata?
No.
Mr. Barrera?
Yes.
Mr. Boville?
No.
Mr. Diaz?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Attorney, the Commissioner was out of the room. We are in the middle of a vote. Is it proper for me?
Yeah, I can say something.
Let me get his answer. Commissioner, let me get his answer for the record.
I mean, I think she can't, there's no reason why she couldn't speak at this point.
Okay, so Commissioner Edmondson, I will recognize you, Mr. Clerk. Can you please wait to continue the vote?
Thank you. This, this involves my vote. This is a hard one for me because this is in my district. And I didn't want to really get into it because I think, me personally, I think it's an excellent project. I think it's a good project. I think it's needed there. But I can show you the stacks of petitions and letters from my constituency and the phone calls that I've received. And sometimes even though you believe in something, you, you have to go against that because of your constituency. I'm going against this because my, my citizens don't want it. They're saying that, let me finish. And this was handed to me by one of my constituents. And there's a word that says in that, on that ballot question, it says privately funded. I, I have to go along with that, that wording there. So I'm going to reluctantly vote no.
Go ahead.
But I...
Madam Chair? Chair, I got to clarify something. It's in, technically, it's in my district.
Okay.
It is not, Commissioner 3, Commissioner 5 of the county.
Clarify for the rec.
I think it's both of us.
Continue, Mr. Clerk.
You're right.
No. It's clear, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, it's adjacent to my district. He's right. I'm not going to fight with him on it, but he's right.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
But it's still my constituency.
Vice Chair Bell?
Yes.
Chairwoman Sosa?
No.
Motion results in the 6 to 6 vote.
He's not here, who's not here?
Second.
Commissioner Soto?
No, Commissioner Boville's here.
Commissioner Soto is not here. Commissioner Boville's here.
So what?
He voted, Boville voted.
So Commissioner Soto is not here? Oh, he's, he's going to be out in a second.
Did you put Jeopardy music?
No, I don't think so. What can we do, Mr. Attorney? We cannot pass to another item?
No action.
So it's not, a no action?
It's a no action.
And if you don't make another motion, then it's removed from the agenda. But you, to the extent you make other motions on the item, those are available.
Okay, so...
Just wait a second.
On the issue...
Wait, wait, because I don't want to provide, if, if I don't have a commissioner here, then the attorneys have to guide me as to what is the process to follow.
Can we get something, Madam Chair? Can we just clarify some questions?
Not now. We already voted and I want to make sure that, they are telling me Commissioner Soto is here, I want to make sure that he's here. And if he's not, then what will be, Mr. Attorney?
Your rules provide, whenever action cannot be taken because a vote of the commissioners has resulted in a tie and no other available motion on an item is made or approved before the next item is called for consideration, the item shall be removed from the agenda and shall only be reintroduced pursuant to renewal, which would require written support by seven of you to bring it back.
Okay, thank you. So next...
Can we defer the item?
Next item.
Can we do that?
Item 4.
Can we defer that?
But why are we going, what? Okay. There is a motion to defer, so to create the ability for the item to come at the next commission meeting. Okay, if we vote in favor, then it comes to the next commission meeting again. If we vote again, then it have to wait. Okay? Anyone wishes to be recorded no on the feral of the item? On the feral of the item. If we defer the item, the item comes the next commission meeting. If not, the item have to wait and get seven signatures to come back. If those, if you wish to be recorded no, please raise your hand. We have two no, three no's. Okay, so the item comes back at the next meeting.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Moss?
Madam Chair, reluctantly, I want to defer item number 6B1 to discuss...